The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Navarro. Seventeen present.
Quorum being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and galleries who's able to stand and please rise for prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, Source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions, amen. We dispense with line item three, introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests, Alderwoman from twenty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. President and Board. I'd like to introduce Frederick Cersey with the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. And I'd like to introduce Orlando Williams with Lubroch Mechanical. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President and esteemed colleagues. I'd like to have as my honored guest Nathan Lett from Firefighters Local 73 and Clinton McBride from Laborers Local 110.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
President, members of the Board, I'd like to have as my honored guests Samuel Adams and Jeff Hans from St. Louis, Kansas City Carpenter's Regional Council. Thank you.
Alderman from the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I'd like to have as my honored guest today Sean Weller from Congressman Clay's office.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, like wraps up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, as we're gathered here on October 12th. This is the 1975, on this day the first Saturday Night Live broadcast occurred. I was sixteen, how old were you? But more importantly, this is Have a Moment of Frustration and Scream Out Loud Day, otherwise known as a conversation with the Alderman from the twenty-third. Thank you.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for approval of the September 28th minutes.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twelfth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Report the city officials.
Report of the Clerk of the Board of Alderman, Board Bill 110, from the Office of the Mayor. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment of the Developmental Disabilities Resource Board. The reappointment of Ms.
They Waterman Lake, I think that was the first one, Waterman Lake Special Business District.
I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Waterman Lake Special District. The reappointment of Mr. Eric Welber, who resides in 28th Ward, whose term will expire December 31st, 2021. The reappointment of Ms. Kimberly Fernandez, who resides in the 28th Ward, whose term will expire December 31st, 2019. To the appointment of Mr. Robert Eskner, who resides in the 28th Ward and whose term will expire December 31st, 2021. The appointment of Ms. Nancy Colbert, who resides in the 28th Ward, whose term will expire December 31st, 2020. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments, sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on Mayor's appointment to the Waterman Lake Special Business District.
Yes, Mr. President, in the absence of the Alderwoman from the 28th, she has asked that I move that these appointments be approved.
Been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth, second by Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Community Jobs Board. The appointment of Mr. Henry Johnson, representing the St. Louis Carpenter's Joint Apprenticeship Programs, whose term will expire December 31st, 2020. The appointment of Mr. Sal Valdez, representing the Eastern Missouri Labor's District Council, whose term will expire December 31st, 2020. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments, sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on Mayor's appointment to the Community Jobs Board.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board, I move to approve the Mayor's appointment.
Moved by Alderman from the seventh, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the twelfth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries.
Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment and reappointment to the Developmental Disabilities Resources Board. The reappointment of Ms. Nina O'North Murphy, who resides in the 8th Ward, whose term will expire October 1st, 2021. The reappointment of Dr. Cynthia Mueller, who resides in the 12th Ward and whose term will expire October 1st, 2021. The appointment of Mr. Patrick Breening, who resides in St. Louis County, whose term will expire October 1st, 2021. The appointment of Mr. David Weber, who resides in the 28th Ward, whose term will expire October 1st, 2019. The appointment of Ms. Dion Flowers, who resides in the 2nd Ward, whose term will expire October 1st, 2019. I respectfully request your approval of the appointments, sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor.
Alderman from the twelfth, you recognize on Mayor's appointment to the Developmental Disability Resources Board.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I ask for favorable consideration for the appointments of the members on the Board from the Mayor's office.
Been moved by Alderman from the twelfth, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the seventh, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. We dispense with line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Mr. President, I'd like to remove Board Bill 21AA from the informal calendar.
On the third reading informal calendar. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 21AA on the regular third reading calendar.
So noted.
Alderman from the seventeenth.
Yes, Mr. President, we've had a number of questions about Resolution 104, Committee Substitute has amended, and I just want to make the announcement that we will be having, I've had discussions with the Alderman from the 25th, we want to go ahead and provide extra opportunity for input on that through his committee. Oh, here he is. I don't want to preempt you, I believe you're going to have the committee hearing on Thursday. So, for those of you who are concerned about it, I would encourage and ask that you attend his meeting and provide him the opportunity to collect your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to take any further bills or any resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? We dispense with line item nine through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 129 sponsored by Alderman Williamson, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from D, Multiple Family Dwelling District, and H, Area Commercial District, to H, Area Commercial District, for the portion of the parcel known as Lot A, on the attached Exhibit A, and to the D, Multi-Family Dwelling District, on the portion of the parcel known as Lot B, in the City Block 5520 and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 130 sponsored by Alderman Valmer, an ordinance approving the petition to establish the Lacona Community Improvement District, established in the Lacona Community Improvement District. Board Bill 131 sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for 3107 Merrimack. Board Bill 132 sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Mayor of the Department of Health, Mayor and authoritative grantee official to enter into and execute a cooperative agreement award with the United States Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, to fund the St. Louis Opio and Homicide Prevention Command Center upon approval of the Board of Estment and Apportionment, and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for the cooperative agreement award purposes and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 133 sponsored by Alderman Koltar, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment and the Board of Public Service, authorizing St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation in its discretion to issue and sell its bonds, supported by payments by the city, and with limitations on the amounts due as city payments with respect thereto in an aggregated principal amount and not to exceed $105 million in alternately, or in addition, authorizing the Board of Estment and Apportionment to approve and the city to execute one or more financing agreements with one or more governmental entities providing for payments by the city with limitations on the amounts due as city payments with respect thereto and containing an emergency clause and a severability clause. Board Bill 134 sponsored by Alderman Williamson and Alderman Moore, pursuant to ordinance 68937, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Frank Williamson Senior Way, which shall begin at the intersection of Enright and Union and run east on Enright to Arlington. Board Bill 135 sponsored by Alderman Williamson, pursuant to ordinance 68937, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Thelma and Williamson Way, which shall begin at intersection of Arlington and Clemens and run north on Arlington to the intersection of Arlington and Windermere. Board Bill 136 sponsored by Alderman Vicaro, an ordinance defining recreational fire as an outdoor fire burning fuel other than rubbish, leaves, grass, paper, building materials, except for untreated dimensional lumber or logs larger than four inches diameter where the fuel is not containing an incinerator. Outdoor fireplace, portable outdoor fireplace, barbecue grill or barbecue pit has a total fuel area no more than 30 inches in diameter, 18 inches in height, used for pleasure, religious, ceremonial, cooking, warmth, or similar purposes, and providing for the regulation of recreational fires and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 137 sponsored by Alderman Williamson and Alderwoman Green, an ordinance revising and amended ordinance number 62885, which imposes one-half of 1% sales tax, known as capital improvement sales tax, on all retail sales made in a city which are subject to taxation under the provisions of Section 144.010 to 144.525, RSMO, and providing for the allocations of funds for the purposes of funding capital improvement, including allocation for ward capital improvements, so that allocations for ward capital improvement for each ward shall be made based upon each ward's need. Such needs to be determined pursuant to any annual analysis conducted by the St. Louis Development Corporation for the following data points for each ward: median housing, income, poverty rate, educational attainment, unemployment rate, crime rate, and vacant parcels per ward, and containing a severability clause. That is extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Human Services Committee, Board Bill 132, to the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 136, to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 130 and 133, to the Streets Committee, Board Bill 134 and 135, to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bill 131, and to the HUSS Committee, Board Bill 129. That is extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following bills were reported out of the Legislation Committee, Board Bill 6, as amended sponsored by Alderwoman Howard and Murphy, an ordinance repealing ordinance 70475, and in lieu thereof enacting an ordinance to be known as the City Whistleblower Law pertaining to reporting improper governmental action and providing protection from retaliatory action for reporting and cooperating in the investigation and/or persecution of improper governmental action, containing definitions, procedures, or reporting improper governmental action and retaliation, and penalties, and containing severability and emergency clauses. Board Bill 124 sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and Alderwoman Murphy, an ordinance repealing Section 4, subsections 746.010 through 756.040 of ordinance 51871, approved April 4th, 1963, and pertaining to the establishment of decent literature commission, its organizations, responsibilities, powers, and purposes. That is extent of second reading.
We dispense with line item 14. Alderwoman from the fourteenth, you recognize.
Mr. President, I would like to move Board Bill 21AA back to committee. Legislation Committee. From the perfection consent calendar.
Hold on, we'll get to that once we get to the perfection consent calendar, we'll read it, and then you make the motion. But you would like it moved off of the perfection consent calendar at this point?
To back to committee.
Okay. All right.
That's all.
All right. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 20.
Is it 21?
Alderwoman from the fourteenth, when we get to that agenda line item, I'll call on you once we get there.
Thank you, Mr. President.
We're not there yet. Perfection consent.
Board Bill 111 sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission to change the zoning of property from A, Single Family Dwelling District, and F, Neighborhood Commercial, to F, Neighborhood Commercial District, in City Block 5177, and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 117 sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Department of Human Services and through the St. Louis Area Agent Agency, and to accept funding from the Missouri Association of Area Agency on aging in the amount of $120,000 over the next five fiscal years. Board Bill 19, as amended sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, Mohammed, Jeffrey Boyd, and Vicaro, an ordinance authorizing and... I'm sorry. 119, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, Mohammed, Jeffrey Boyd, and Vicaro, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Public Safety to enter into and execute an intergovernmental agreement with the United States Marshal Service for Housing and Related Services for United States Marshal detainees within the Division of Corrections.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the perfection consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the tenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Board bills for perfection?
We have none.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill 20, Board Bill 22, 23, 33, 34, 38, 39, 40, as amended, 79, 80, 81, 82, 84, 94, 95, 113, 115, 118, 98, 102, 85, and 112.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize, you recognize on the motion, for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, entertain a second on that motion, second by Alderman from the 27th, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alder, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Navarro. Twenty-four aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion, Alderman from the eighteenth, and third read, and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading report of engrossments.
We have none.
Board Bill 21.
Oh, sorry, 21 as amended.
Please read it.
Board Bill 21 as amended sponsored by Alderwoman Howard, an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city a proposal to revise Section 2 of Article 8 of the City Charter, which requires city employees to reside within the boundaries of the city and thus allow said employees, except for city agency and department directors, excuse me, department directors, appointed by the mayor to reside outside of the boundaries of the city, and providing for an election to be held for voting on the proposed revision and the manner of voting there, and containing an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth, you recognize on third reading, final passage of Board Bill 21 as amended.
Mr. President, at this time, I would like to remove, resend Board Bill 21A as amended back to committee. The date on the bill is expired. It was to be on the November election.
Okay, first you just got to make a motion to send it back to committee, and then we'll get...
Okay, I would like to make a motion to send it back to committee.
Been moved by Alderman from the fourteenth, second by Alderman from the 22nd, please proceed, Alderman.
Okay, the reason I want to send this back to committee is when the bill was originally drafted, it was slated to be on the November 6th election cycle. That due date for having that on the ballot has passed, and I want to send it back to committee to have the date changed.
All right, thanks. Any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved by Alderman from the fourteenth, second by Alderman from the 22nd, that we refer Board Bill 21 as amended back to Legislation Committee. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vicaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Navarro. Twenty-six aye votes.
By your vote, sustain the motion of Alderman from the fourteenth, and refer Board Bill Number 21 as amended back to committee. Madam Clerk, please assign Board Bill 21 as amended back to legislation.
So noted.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bill 20, 22, 23, 33, 34, 38, 39, 40, as amended, 79, 80, 81, 82, 84, 94, 95, 113, 115, 118, 98, 102, 85, and 112.
All other business being suspended, present shall in open session affix his signature Alderwoman from the nineteenth, Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you recognize on motion for courtesy resolutions count?
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I move we adopt our courtesy resolution consent count.
Move by Alderwoman from the nineteenth, second by Alderwoman from the eighteenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Thank you.
Dispense with line item twenty-one. Second reading of resolutions.
Resolution one forty-eight sponsored by Alderwoman Iggracia, Green, Alderman Gunther, Alderwoman Rice, Navarro, and Martin. The Board of Alderman supports the proposition that Endegeneous Peoples' Day shall be an opportunity to celebrate the thriving cultures and values of the Endegeneous People of our region.
Alderwoman from the sixth, you recognize on the second reading, Resolution number one forty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we pass Resolution one forty-eight.
Move by Alderwoman from the sixth, second by Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the twenty-sixth, please proceed. Any further discussion? It's been moved, the second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
That is extent of second reading of resolution.
Ms. Lane, I'm finished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, October fifteenth, Transportation and Commerce Meeting, six-thirty at the Greater Pentecostal Church, sixty-eighty West Florissant. Tuesday, October sixteenth, Public Safety Meeting, ten AM in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday, October seventeenth, Hoods Meeting, nine AM in the Kennedy Room. Also, Wednesday, ten AM in the Kennedy Room is Ways and Means. And Thursday, October eighteenth, Ways and Means, nine AM in the Leisure Room. Friday, October nineteenth, it's a full board meeting, ten AM in the chambers.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Madam Clerk, will you please add a Neighborhood Development Committee meeting for next Thursday at nine AM?
So noted.
Thank you.
Alderman from the seventeenth.
Two announcements. One is Block Grant is, was first read last week, this coming up Wednesday, I will be out of town, but the Vice Chair of our committee, Alderwoman Davis, has agreed to hold the hearing on the Block Grant Bill next Wednesday, and with the idea that we would have a week for people to digest it, not that there's much that we can do with it anymore as a result of the new rules, but everyone, it seems, appears to like to have some time to digest that after the hearing, and the intent would be to pass it out of committee the following week. That was my first announcement. And the second one was, I was very disappointed to learn that our colleague from the twenty-fourth has announced his decision not to seek reelection.
Yes.
At times, I think I was perhaps his most vocal critic down here, but I, that does not, should not be considered a reflection of the high esteem that I have held him in, and I thought his contribution while he's been down here has been a very significant one for the city, and he will be sadly missed, and the city is at loss for his decision not to run. Thank you.
And I second that. Alderman, we wish you all the luck in the world, but we're gonna miss you at the Board of Alderman. You have made a significant contribution. Alderman from the twenty-fourth.
Well, I didn't prepare anything to say, Mr. President. I just remind people, I'm not resigning, I simply...
I know.
I'll still be around for the next six months, so, you know, there must be a joke about you being your most popular on your last, your last day.
First and last.
Everybody likes you and they know you're leaving. But, yes, it's been, maybe I'll have some remarks later, but it's been a unique and mostly rewarding job, but, but thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I'd like to call a Streets Track and Refuse Meeting for next Friday, October nineteenth, at nine fifteen AM in the Leisure Room.
Alderman from twelve.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I'd like to schedule a meeting Tuesday at twelve-thirty on Board Bill one thirty-two in the Health and Human Services Committee.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Mr. President, if I may, real quick, to the Alderman from the twenty-fourth, I just got a text from Farmer Alderman Villa who said he was glad to see you didn't have your arms crossed.
Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. The art of confusion prevails throughout my community. I have over ten organizations that are vying for power. I'm asking Vince Shamel, George Jones, Steve Hutchins arise, all the confusion, people that bringing confusion to the fourth ward, to stay out of the fourth ward, leave the fourth ward alone. They're creating confusion and trouble. How can you have ten ward meetings a month? People are disrespecting leadership. Like I said, I feel like a goldfish in a piranha tank. Since I've been sick, people have been, the predators have been preying on the community. But we have the right and we're gonna continue to work and build our community back into the granted that it once had, and I'm asking these individuals to stay out of the ward and to keep back confusion. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that message, Alderman. Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm making this announcement for the Alderwoman for the second ward. She wasn't able to be here today. She said that CROCA will be having the Oktoberfest on October the eleventh from noon to four at the Chain of Rocks Bridge. It will include car show, raffle, food and beverages. This will be fun for all. Thank you, have a great weekend.
Alright, thank you. Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, Mr. President, esteemed colleagues, and I would like to announce that tomorrow, ten AM, forty-two hundred Delore at St. John the Baptist Parish, there will be a public hearing on Board Bill ninety-three sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer from the twentieth ward to require a citywide vote on approval of any proposal aimed at having the effect of privatizing Lambert International Airport. Please come out, speak your onions, and let us know how you feel about this. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. I'd like to schedule a Transportation and Committee hearing for this Thursday at three-thirty.
Alright.
Thursday, next week, three-thirty.
Thursday at three-thirty?
Yes.
Madam Clerk?
So noted.
Please make note of that. Alderwoman, Alderwoman from the twenty-seventh.
Okay, Mr. President, now this is for me.
Okay.
I wanted to invite all the residents within the twenty-seventh ward in regards to our Transportation Committee from the Board of Alderman. They will be talking about Board Number ninety-three, and it's about the airport and the privatization. We're inviting all residents to attend and to give your input and feedback. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, it's the sixty-eighty West Florissant, Greater Pentecostal Church at six o'clock PM on Monday.
On Monday. Alright, thank you, Alderwoman. Any further, any further announcements? Alderman from the tenth.
Hello, hello, hello. Thank you, Mr. President, Members of the Board. This Sunday at Barra Park in the heart of the Hill will be the Great Pizza Square Off. Come on by, and there's, I believe, six contestants. You get to judge pizzas, there'll be food, drink, beverages, and all kinds of things going on, so come on down, it's family-friendly. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourth.
I think the nineteenth was before me, but tomorrow at nine AM at Sumner High School, we're having our, Sumner High School Tailgate and Reunion whereby Vashon come low and we let them win the football game every year.
But not this year, right?
So we might give y'all a little trouble this year, but we, it's a courtesy that we let our guests win, that we invite our guests in, so we make sure that they win, but we're having a tailgate party, y'all are welcome and invited. Also, tomorrow, there's a surprise dedication for me.
It's a big surprise.
It's a surprise, so be surprised when you see me there. At six o'clock, at thirteen-thirty North Chella and Evans, it's a surprise, so come and surprise me tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you all. Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I was gonna try.
To surprise them.
But, I do wanna encourage people to come out. It will also, not only give us an opportunity to recognize the Alderman from the fourth ward who has had the unique ability to be there longer than one term, also actually create and, and have visible development happen. That ward has suffered for a while, and he needs to get some recognition for that, he needs to get some recognition for being a child of God who never steps outside of that, and it'll also give us an opportunity to have a moment of what I call friendly gathering. So I'm looking forward to tomorrow. I, Vashon will be there at the football game, and then we will come and give him great recognition.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further announcements, any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderwoman from the sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hope to see some of you this evening at Gateway STEM. The Roosevelt Rough Riders are up for the PHL Conference Championship Game, and we will be there from five to eight tonight. Thanks.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the eighteen, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, may I make an announcement?
Yes, you, of course, you're the floor leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Safety Committee, it was announced, will have a hearing on Tuesday. That hearing is, we will have a special guest, the Director of Public Safety, the Police Commissioner, and some of the commanders to discuss the crime issues in the city and the ways they're going about trying to solve them. It should be a very informative discussion, and all members of the Board are invited to attend that meeting. That would be this coming Tuesday at ten AM. I could now do the excused motion.
Please proceed.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move that the Alderman from the second, the eleventh, and the twenty-eighth be excused for necessary absence.
It's been moved by Alderwoman from the eighteenth, second by Alderwoman from the tenth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. A little late, Alderwoman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, I move that the Board adjourns until Friday, October nineteenth, ten AM.
Move by Alderwoman from the eighteenth, second by Alderwoman from the tenth, all in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. We stand adjourned.